Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Director of the Council of the City of Southfield for Monday. Some of the teams in Southfield, along with the first team's small mall business.
You too, Mr. Seifer?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Cassby?
Here.
See more, you have seven members present.
First, I am the Executive Communications Leader of the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce. Could you introduce yourself?
Sure.
And give us your name and address.
Sure. My name is Tanya Marcos Bano. I am the new Executive Director for the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce. We have moved, so our new address is 24300.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but pull the mic up because I'll be...
Is that going to be better?
Yep.
Okay. Do you want me to start over?
Please.
My name is Tanya Marcos Bano. I'm with the, I'm the new Executive Director for the... It's not working.
I heard it's on the radio.
Is that there? Is it on?
Well, don't we have to keep on... It was new, uh, Executive of the Chamber of Commerce, fix it.
Oh. I can try.
I think you can hear it. It's like, it was pretty good.
I'm sorry, everything is odd, maybe you don't know what the telephone is. And I have nothing to do with it. One day we'll be technologically... Okay. Just give me five minutes. Okay, so, I'm sorry, once again, my name is Tanya Marcos Bano. I'm the new Executive Director for the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to just take a couple of minutes to introduce myself, so that you guys would know, ladies and gentlemen, who I am, and see how we can work together. We did move offices, as of today. We are at 24300 Southfield Road, in Suite 101, in Southfield, 48075. Our offices are located on the northeast corner of Mount Vernon and Southfield Road. So I welcome any members of the Council to come over, take a visit of our new location. I'd be happy to sit down with you. I would like to maybe discuss how the City of Southfield and the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce can work together to help maintain our, you know, business presence here and, you know, work with the businesses that we have here in this community. So if anybody has any questions, ask me. I'm here for you. Have to forgive me, I don't have any business cards with me, they're getting printed, I'm picking them up tomorrow. We'll leave them with Ms. Nancy Banks, and she can distribute them accordingly.
Great. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
When we met the first time the other day, that we were speaking to Mr. Fraser and myself, maybe you could take a minute and relay some of the things that you've done since you've been on the job?
Sure. I, uh...
I think that'd be helpful to that for you.
Sure. I was actually put in a position probably about six weeks or so ago, and upon taking the position, we have redone our entire website, so it's a lot more user-friendly. Obviously, we physically have relocated, and we are working to put together new programs and educational seminars for our Chamber members to engage our business community a little bit more, so that we are offering value to the Chamber members. We are working simultaneously now with the Keldean American Chamber of Commerce, and getting ready to reach out to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, both of which are located here in Southfield, just to kind of build some kind of a working relationship with those other chambers, to add more value to our business community here in Southfield. I feel like it's important that we really dig our feet into this, because I'm sure you all are aware that Southfield businesses have been leaving, and we want to stop that. I think it's important to continue to build and maintain this strong business community that we are able to have. So with your help, and the help of other chambers, and our business community, I think it's certainly possible to do that. So I want to engage you, the Council members, you know, come to our meetings, our different committees that we have, the different networking events that are available to you, that's all. That invitation is open for you to attend. And if it's okay, I could put you on our email distribution list, so every Monday, you'll get an email with different news, what's going on here in Southfield, which I'm sure you're probably pretty aware of, the different events that we have throughout the month, and then a spotlight on our members. So we won't spam you, we'll just provide you with some real basic information as to what the Chamber's doing.
You can send me off to...
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One other thing, very quickly. I know you probably read all kinds of publications, but I think we have so much to learn from Grand Rapids, between Art Prize and now this latest thing that we're doing, the Five by Five Night for startup businesses. I know they got some deep pockets over there, but I clicked these knowing you were coming.
I appreciate that.
So, um, it's just really inspiring what they're doing there, and if you've been to Grand Rapids, you can just see this tremendous turnaround downtown. That city has really done a lot. So anyhow, those are for you, Tanya.
I appreciate that. And, you know, as the new Director, I'm teachable and open to, you know, learn how we can help this business community, so definitely do this research here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And people speak up a little louder, you can hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, she has some token recognitions in the senior queue, in fact. The last room. I don't know much. The next one is the first one, Rabbi Menzel's time. They're like trying to perform, and you know, maybe, but if you're looking to go, it's a little...
Hi, good evening. I'll try and raise my voice so everyone can hear me.
That's good.
Um, I'm with the Chabad Lubavish organization, based in Oak Park, 14100 West Nine Mile Road. I'm personally a resident of Southfield for the last couple of years, and I'm proud to be one. We're very happy and excited that once again the City of Southfield is allowing the menorah to be placed on the lawn or out the window. For me, it's the first time being involved with it, since the menorah that was donated in the past has expired, and I was able to help fund a little bit of money to get a new one. And I want to just thank the city and all the Council members for allowing it, and joining together with literally hundreds of other cities across the country, who are also displaying different religious displays funded by local organizations on the city property, including in front of the White House, there's going to be a menorah lighting there, which presidents have taken part in in the past, other dignitaries. I want to thank the Department of Public Works, and the Department of Parks and Recreation for installing the tube, which we can affix the menorah to it, and running the wires. And I think the menorah also has a very universal message, which is spreading light over darkness, which if you have a room that's absolutely dark, and you light just a little candle, it gives a lot, a lot of light, which may not be noticeable when the sun is shining. But unfortunately, our world can be looked at as like a dark world in a lot of ways, but if you light just even one small candle, it sheds a lot of light. So I'm proud to be a part of this, and I thank you for your help if you have any questions.
I understand you are having some sort of a celebration, or you want to...
Yeah, I want to invite everyone here, the Council members, anyone else, we're going to light the menorah on Wednesday night at 5:30. Just coming Wednesday night, the menorah will hopefully be put up tomorrow, and on Wednesday night, the holiday's coming, there's no time to waste. So we'll light the menorah, and we'll share more inspiring messages, and celebrate the freedom that our country has, which is the freedom of religion, not freedom from religion. And, uh...
Anything else you want to add to that?
She keeps it Wednesday night at 5:30?
Wednesday night at 5:30.
Out on the lawn.
Out on the lawn, right where the menorah is placed.
Well, I, we thank you very much, we're not going to have that bad conference, and something happened to the other one, that's based on this, so whatever things I have of it, for our youth, but it's for your time, and thank you very much. If you'd watch, really.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the Chairman of the, the Assistant of the Southfield Committee for Youth, and he is, Scott Griffin, Chairman of the Board.
Do you think I'd give you my, you know, my address at the Field Zone, or my address at the office? Office is 29433 Southfield Road, in Southfield. So I'll spare you the three-year history, because you know it all, and every few months I try to come in and give you an update. This is our most recent update, and that now we're at a point where we can say, okay, here's where we're at, and we want your blessing. So we, last time I met with you, we were still talking to a number of different organizations to try to get the money that we need to continue operations at the Field Zone. Field Zone, by, I think, every conceivable measure, has been a great success, except one, and that is our ability to raise the money to continue to operate. And we, had we had better hindsight, we wouldn't have opened when we did, because it's been a tough couple of years, as many of you know, to raise money. So now that we're at the point that we're at, though, we obviously want to continue operations, we're serving a lot of kids and a lot of families in Southfield and Lathrow. So we've brainstormed over the last year to try to come up with any way that we can, and we, it was kind of a number of things happened at the same time that were really fateful, I guess. We were, we had been meeting, I think, at the last, maybe one or two meetings ago that I updated you, we had met with the Boys and Girls Club of Southeast Michigan. Meetings went very well, they were interested in doing something together with us, we had very similar programs, some overlap, some synergistic possibilities, but they didn't have much money. In fact, they were closing two clubs, and so that didn't work out. We met with a number of other organizations, we've talked with Parks and Rec about doing the senior center there, and we still have hopes for some fashion of that. We talked with AARP about doing a senior center there, we've talked with different groups. Unbeknownst to us, another Boys and Girls Club organization, the Boys and Girls Club of South Oakland County, which operates the Royal Oak and the Ferndale Club, and most recently, last month, they opened another club in Washington Township. So they probably have to change the name now, because that's Macomb. They were trying to open a new club in Southfield. They had received a go-ahead from their board, a go-ahead from National Boys and Girls Clubs, they received a grant to do that, and they were pretty deep in discussions with a church locally to open there. At the last minute, it fell apart on the side of the church. We found out about it a week later, and contacted them, and we started talking, had the same kind of conversations that we had had with the previous Boys and Girls Club, and wow, this is like a hand-in-glove fit, this is perfect. And the difference is that they had money, and they also had, they're geographically more proximate to us than the other one was. So we started a number of meetings, we started working their board, our board, independently. I have had a lot of meetings, I had shared with city staff this last week, that we have showed them five or six drafts of an agreement that we've been through to try to move to the next stage. We came up with a plan, a three-stage plan, I think you have a copy of that, that was done a couple of months ago, and that was, first, let's try to get a temporary agreement in which we can work together, see if this is going to be as good as we all think it will be, and then during that time period, which will be over the next year, try to develop something that would be more permanent. Secondly, get the approval of their board, get the approval of our board, and then get the approval of city council. That's kind of the stage that we're in now, we've reached an agreement, they have the approval of their board, we have the approval of our board, we've met with our staff just about an hour ago, and now we're here to seek city council's approval. What we would need approval for are a couple of different things. One is that in our lease, it says that we can't subcontract the operation of the Field Zone to someone else. There are a number of different ways that we could do the agreement with the Boys and Girls Clubs. The cleanest way is the way that we've, we think we've chosen to do it, which would require a subcontracting. Right now, we have, I don't know if any of you have heard of Access Point, it's an employee leasing company based in Novi. We, Access Point actually employs all of our employees at the Field Zone. We pay a fee to them, they cover all the benefits, they cover the taxes, they do the payroll. So we, in a way, subcontract our employees to them, not the operation. Boys and Girls Club would take over that responsibility. Our payroll is eighty-two percent of our entire budget. That's aside from all the other expenses, we have the printing machine, and the supplies, and repairs, and maintenance, and the food, and pop, and stuff that we have there. But eighty-two percent of our total budget is the, is the staff. Some of the savings that, there are a couple of things. One, under this agreement, the Boys and Girls Club would take over that entire responsibility. So right now, we're, we have inverse profit, if you will, of, another way of saying we're bleeding, twelve, thirteen thousand dollars a month. So there's, there's two points, or one, they would take over the staff, two, and that's what we talked to our staff about tonight. Two is that our, if you take our staff, and we have an executive director, for two years, that was Lauren King, now interim is Linda Neighbors, many of you know. Then take our operations manager, that was Kevin Lartik, and now is Peter Banks, and then take our program manager, which first was Chrissy Wafers, then Danielle Abrams. So those are our three full-time, highest-paid employees, a couple of them have benefits, and then we have all of our part-time staff. So eighty-two percent of our total budget is our staff. About seventy, seventy-five percent of our total staff budget is the top three people. One of the beauties of this arrangement is that the Boys and Girls Club already has an executive director, someone that's over all of their clubs. They have an operations manager, they have a programs manager, they have something that we've all talked about before, that we would love to have, but we can't afford, a development director, someone that's full-time, is out trying to raise money for the Boys and Girls Clubs. That would give us all of those components, so we would save on those upper-end admin people. We would still need a club director, they have a club director, they have, I believe, a club director over all the clubs, and then they have a unit manager for each club. We would have that. And we would still have some staff, but we would save significantly on both the payroll and they're taking over all the payroll, so it'd be significant. I think you all have a copy of the agreement, and I'd be happy to answer questions, but first I wanted to introduce you to the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of South Oakland County, Brett Tillander. And Brett, if we could, maybe he could tell you his background, how he is with the Boys and Girls Club, and what his plan or vision is.
So what's the last name?
Tillander. T-I-L-L-A-N-D-E-R.
I'll pass it right around, and I will also speak up to everybody. It's T-I-L-L-A-N-D-E-R, and it's Brett, B-R-E-T-T. First of all, Council President, thank you, and the Council members for inviting me to be here tonight. I just want to let you know, this opportunity to connect with Southfield will be my third tour through Southfield. I'm with Catholic Social Services and the American Heart Association, and I've enjoyed my time working in Southfield, but since 2001, I've had the opportunity to be the Executive Director for Boys and Girls Clubs of South Oakland County. And my time there started when I was fifteen years old, a kid in high school looking for a part-time job, who had a part-time job at Burger King that wasn't working out too well, and I wanted to work somewhere where it really fed me, and that was the Boys and Girls Club. And just to speak to what matters most here, is what you've created in the Field Zone is amazing. And Boys and Girls Clubs get started in communities, because a community comes forward and says we want a safe place for kids. You did that by creating the Field Zone. And when we were approached, there isn't some, we're all autonomous organizations, there is a national organization that's supported by the locals, but there is not some ivory tower that can look and tell us what to do, we're all locally controlled, a little different than some other models. The only way a club gets started is a community reaches out and says, we want a club here. And in Washington Township, that happened last month, a former club member of ours lost his twenty-year-old son to cancer. And two years ago, he came to me, a month after his son died, and said, I want to leave a legacy for my son, and I'd like to do it. I get those calls a lot, I was really surprised when it happened. They raised the money, and they're open. Here, when the opportunity in Southfield arose, a church reached out to us. We weren't, you know, I've always had a second home here, my brother grew up here, I've always felt comfortable, and known there's tremendous need. You saw that need with the creation of the Field Zone. The church reached out to us and said, we have a beautiful gym, beautiful facility, and it's just not being used well enough. And we started the discussion with them, and I went off to Boys and Girls Clubs of America, because there was some seed money available to be able to create this club. And just as we were moving forward, their plans changed. And I called Cheryl Thames, who's a good friend of mine with Optimus, and I said, Cheryl, I said, do you know anybody in Southfield? Right, right person to call is Cheryl, right? And I said, do you know anybody in Southfield, somebody with a school, somebody within the community? She said, I don't, I can't believe that you're calling me about this. I said, why? She said, I need to put you in touch with the folks at the Field Zone, because they need funding to go forward. That's how we end up here today. So as much as I'd like to say there's some great strategic plan, and a beautiful goal that was set, there really wasn't. It was just people doing the right thing, almost three years ago now, creating the Field Zone. And then a church who reached out and said, we want to do this in Southfield, that it didn't work out, and the money's still sat. So that's where we're at, that's why we're here. And there may be some questions I'd love to answer, and I know Scott's got more detail. I know your job is tough, and I know the night is long, so I'm going to stop talking and answer any questions that you have for either of us.
I am so pleased that this is taking place. I've just read the brochures you gave us. In nineteen ninety-five, I started, attempted to start a team club. We formed a committee, we ran about two months, three months, four months, then we went to council at that time. Tell on deaf ears, nothing happened. They once took it off the agenda, and we had a meeting in lobby. That is, now, there's here's a dream come true, because you're going to make the success out of this, and these kids are going to stop falling through the cracks now, as they have been. I'm very pleased to have all my cooperation, or whatever I can do, I will do, and I will help. Thank you so much.
Yeah, either one could answer that. How are the two going to accomplish what Field Zone set out to do, and it is to bring the young people from the schools, and get them off the street, out of the library, and get them some disciplines, and get them some mentoring, and those kinds of things? How does this work out? Familiar with Boys and Girls Club, because Ed LaPfeber, who's the president of the banks in Royal Oak, was very instrumental in that, and he used to be, you know, Bank of Southfield originally, but he was always out hustling for them, and that was always a rewarding role for him, and he got me involved in it at that time. But how do these two groups going to work together and accomplish the same goal that each have?
Well, a lot of our goals are similar, and we do a lot of the things the same. But Boys and Girls Club's been around for a hundred and five years, and the Royal Oak Club for fifty-three years. So they've had a lot more experience, and they, they have real measurable, when they do a program, they know how many participated, what the exit surveys were they, frankly better than what we do. On the other hand, they've looked at our programs and said, you do some things that we've never even thought about here. So there's definitely some synergy possibilities. We do some things differently. There, some of their clubs are like ours, middle school and high school, some of them are from six to eighteen. We don't anticipate lowering our age, but it's, you have to have a unique facility to be able to separate kids that are that far apart in age. We don't have that. So we'll, we'll keep it like it is now. They have some different, not different, they have some goals that are more distinct, refined, stated than what ours are. You've heard our mission statement, and we want to give kids a safe place, we want to develop them into leaders, we want to give them alternative activities to do, we want to give them, while they're there, we don't want just to be a latchkey program, we want to say, what would you like to learn? What skill would you like to develop? You know, those kinds of things. And so we've done that, but why don't you, we have two hundred to three hundred students as members. We charge seventy-five dollars per semester for four months, so it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. They charge twenty-five dollars a year. They have seventeen hundred members at their club. So that's a little bit different. We're not going to change anything right away, but, I mean, we'd like to have more members, so that's definitely a possibility. We want to be inclusive. As you all know, we provide scholarships. Their philosophy is that a lot of people that could get a scholarship won't apply, because they don't want that stigma, they don't want their child to be embarrassed, the parent doesn't want to be embarrassed, so they just don't apply. Whereas if it was twenty-five dollars, they would come and take part. Why don't you talk about the two or three mainstay goals that you have?
It is an amazing fit for me. I wouldn't be, you know, as an organization, in these times, it's the toughest, I mean, preaching to the choir, everybody in this room, the toughest times that Michigan has ever seen, ever seen. So for us to go forward in a leap of faith, I can't risk partnering up with something that doesn't align. And what was amazing was the alignment that is there with the programs and services. First of all, the dedication to the age group, for me personally, is also where you get the biggest bang for your buck. Because the ages that the Field Zone is servicing now, they're making the decisions that are going to alter the rest of their life's course. Are they going to graduate? Are they going to be able to graduate and not have caused a pregnancy, or been pregnant? Are they going to be able to make sure that they don't have contact with law enforcement? Those are the, in ten years, and I always say ten years, it's probably longer than that. And I spent many times in Ed LaPfeber's office, and he, you know how passionate he was about clubs. Since the, I think in the last ten years, and this is probably true longer than this, we've had zero teen pregnancies, either where a girl's been pregnant, or a boy has been participant to a pregnancy. Hundred percent of our kids have graduated. We've had one kid who's gotten a GED, but for him, it was a huge, a first kid in his family to graduate from high school, and he did it through a GED. And our kids don't get in contact with law enforcement. So we have that, that's what we look for, so we want that graduation rate, and we're going to raise the bar, because you know what, just graduating from high school today isn't enough. You used to be able to walk into the plants, and be able to get a job, and raise a family, and have benefits, and a pension. Everybody knows those days set the mission a long time ago. We're going to have kids who are really engaged with what's going on. So I see that the programs go well together, I'm not concerned about there being friction or a bad fit at all. I want to also clarify something that was said earlier. The work that has been going on at the Field Zone has been incredible for the years that it's been open. It has had tremendous impact on those kids. My goal would be that we be able to come back and report in months and in years to come, the incredible opportunities they have continued because of your vision, your foresight, your commitment, and that's my hope, so.
You know, the question I have would be legal, we just changed the rules, and then we, we, we...
For that one event?
The one event. So how do we lend these to, do we direct it to the legal department?
Yeah, in essence, what we're, what Council would need to do, because under the existing lease agreement between the city and the Field Zone, they are not able to subcontract the operation unless the city council approves that. So there would be a, basically a consent to the subcontract agreement, and we put that together, and these would be the terms upon which we would agree to the consent. We obviously want to have some things like the same indemnities and insurance that we get from the field, we would expect that from you to the city as well. I think there's an issue of a name change, maybe, we probably want to address that, so it could be a pretty short agreement. The terms of the lease would apply still, obviously the Boys and Girls Club would, but there would be some things we'd want directly from the Boys and Girls Club as well, and we could do that in a pretty simplistic kind of consent agreement.
Just responding to that, and also, you know, we've put in place, based on your current standard, that was in place for Field Zone, and current policy with Philadelphia, which I could email to you at your convenience. And then the second piece is, and I, there's been a little bit of confusion about this, and I just want to make this clear, the Field Zone name is front and center, and doesn't go anywhere. What you've created, we just opened this club in Macomb County, and it was the son, its name's a Stanley Ian Babinski unit. It's front and center, it's a mouthful, but it's front and center, and it's a Boys and, it's part of the Boys and Girls Club of our organization. So Field Zone needs to be front and center, and I think we just leave it Field Zone, and it's in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, and if it goes through some machinations decades to come, we deal with it, but I don't want Field Zone ever lost. Field Zone has to be the identifier, because the kids in this community, the parents in this community, own that and know it. Because the kids in this community, the parents in this community own that and know it. Field Zone doesn't, so as we craft that, I just want to make sure, I know that's, I'm sure you're committed, but I won't be part of something that says Field Zone isn't front and center first, two words, just that way, standalone.
Can you tell me what would happen with the existing staff, the three individuals there? Is it a research initiative?
It's actually not the, it's not the three individuals. We met with the whole staff, he didn't mention three individuals.
I mean, in terms of employment, are they going to lose their jobs, or what's going to happen?
Let's wait and talk about your in and out.
We, right now, our arrangement is with Access Point. So we've met with all of the staff. The three individuals that I mentioned, we only have two of them now. We've told all the staff that as of December thirty-one, their employment with Access Point, the Field Zone through Access Point, will be terminated. This, the week after Christmas, Brett will meet with each one of them, I think actually starting tomorrow morning, will meet with each one of them and interview them as if they were reapplying, understanding their background, how long they've been with the Field Zone, what they do with the Field Zone, their value to us. And then by December twenty-ninth, each of them would know whether they were going forward or not. There will be, as I said, some efficiencies, which result in a few of them. We actually have hired five people in the last two months to replace staff that have been there a long time that left or went to college or whatever. So, and I don't know that it's last in, first out. It's just who has the most passion for what we do there and isn't just there for a job. And so that would happen in the next two weeks.
I would just hope that the staff would give preference, if not even security.
Well, how about, let me make this really clear, because you and I are on the same page with this. This is, this change isn't because any staff at the Field Zone did anything wrong.
Oh, no, I understand that, but I want to make sure that they're.
Nobody from outside is being hired in this process. So everybody who's currently on Field Zone staff will have the opportunity to apply. And the makeup of the staff, because there's a thirteen thousand dollar lead every month right now. We've got to get it right sized. The makeup of the staff going forward is going to come out of this current Field Zone staff. So it's not like I'm bringing in somebody who's going to be suddenly sitting behind the front desk and greeting. These staff members have created great relationships with the kids. That consistency has to be maintained. So that's my commitment. The makeup of the staff will come out of the current Field Zone staff. It might look different in terms of positions, size, number, because we've got to get the budget to work.
So they won't just have the first shot at those jobs? They'll be the only ones considered for the jobs.
My other concern is, the membership will now be open to non-Cowfield and non-Lathrow residents?
That has actually been the case for the last four months. In the agreement that we did, where you gave us a grant of forty-five thousand dollars to make it through the end of the year, that was part of that agreement. And here's what our issue has been since we opened. We always wanted to make sure that we never turned a Southfield or Lathrow resident or student away because our club was big and we opened it to outside. So for the first two years, you couldn't be a member, you couldn't be there for a day if you weren't a resident or student of Southfield or Lathrow. What we found is that we're about, operating at about one-third of capacity on our busy days. So we have, we might have an event where there's two or three hundred kids. But typically, we have eighty to a hundred and twenty kids there, and our capacity's a little over three hundred. So here's the problem that we have all the time. Somebody's cousin is staying with them for a week. Somebody's brother or whatever stays with them. Right now, I'll tell you that of all the students that we have at the Field Zone, in the last four months since you allowed us to try this, we have had a total of five non-resident or non-students, total.
So is it going to be recruitment? You know, you mentioned that the Boys and Girls Club, the Royal Oak, Ferndale, and Washington.
Another question.
Are you going to recruit students from those areas to come here? Or are you going to try to expand or give more awareness of the Field Zone here in Southfield?
I only have one answer to that, and it's the second part. There are so many kids here. We couldn't, you know, when I first came back as the executive director ten years ago, there were some people, the program wasn't flourishing, it was kind of just bouncing along and wasn't where it needed to be. So people said, "You realize what the population is happening in Hazel Park, Madison Heights, Royal Oak, and Ferndale? You know, we've all seen this part of the county go down." That's not the problem. We couldn't possibly reach every youth in Southfield if we wanted to. If they all showed up on one day, we'd be like, "Oh, no." So the focus has got to be on those who live in Southfield, attend schools at Lathrow. And I can tell you, for me, my philosophy is, first of all, we're going to get more repetition. If a kid comes to the Boys and Girls Club seventy-five times, seventy-five hours or more, that's when we start to see the gains academically, we start to see the reduction in alcoholic drug use. I need kids who are going to be there regularly. They're going to live in the neighborhood, they're going to live in the city, they're going to attend Southfield schools, Lathrow schools. That's where our focus is going to be. I don't ever see a campaign to recruit kids in other communities to attend here. Other than what he's talking about, which is more of an operational issue, I don't ever see us doing that. And there could be some synergies, where there could be a regional conference of teen leaders, and we'd love to host that at the Field Zone, to be able to show off the gem that it is. And where you might have like a two-day conference here of leaders from across the Midwest, that's different. But you're talking, I think you're referring to daily use. And daily use, absolutely, we're going to focus a hundred percent of our effort right here.
And from a practical standpoint, the reason we have so many middle schoolers is because Southfield Schools provides buses. The reason that we've had difficulty getting high schoolers is because they don't. So from a practical standpoint, it would make no sense for us to try to get students from other areas, how would they get there? So that was not our interest.
All right, you can answer my question, but I may feel very comfortable about what you're saying. Thank you.
I'm assuming something, but I'd like to hear you give me an assurance, I guess. I'm familiar with the management procedures and the student control issues at the Field Zone. I think they're excellent, the waving in and the card, and so all of these things are going to stay the same, correct?
Our background checks for staff and that kind of stuff almost mirror each other. Where theirs are stronger, we're going to make ours stronger. But none of the security measures changed, none of the, we've, our board has talked a lot about discipline. They do it a little bit differently. We have, we have a disciplinary review committee that the judge chairs. So it's, if somebody has a problem with a staff decision, you go to a review board that's the judge of Southfield, that is a parent, that is a peer and a staff member, and a staff member. Good luck with that. I mean, you got to have a pretty strong case to have something to prove.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I thought that was sort of key zone to your operations. I'm a little confused about the dues. So are the dues going to drop then to twenty-five dollars?
We're going to keep our dues the same. Again, so this is really important to understand. This is a up-to-one-year agreement.
Right.
So that we can fashion something more permanent. We didn't have a lot of time, so this was a lot of meetings focused in a few months. So as we fashion something more permanent, we're not going to change any of our operations. We're not changing the hours, we're not changing the dues, we're not, nothing. The biggest single change is we may lose a couple of staff members. But that's for operations and efficiency.
And just with the dues, just to emphasize this. The dues that are collected are going to the Field Zone for, I don't want the dues. I want to be able to bring this to every kid in Southfield. Two twenty-five is the right thing that needed to be put into place, because they have to be able to balance. I want to figure out a way that we can do this and make this more accessible to more kids in a safe way, secure way, but to give them the opportunity. So I'm really not interested in the dues coming from the members. That's going to go to Field Zone and be reinvested in some ways that they need to be. But philosophically, I'd like to see a lower number, because I don't want an economic hurdle. I don't want a kid who says, you know, Scott goes and visits Field Zone afterwards, and he says, "Scott, how much is it?" It's only two hundred and quarters. He didn't give the big amount, right?
Because I'm proud of my membership and students.
Two hundred and quarters, my parents paid two hundred and twenty-five dollars for me to go. I'm going to go home and say, "Ah, I got something, I'm hanging with my friend, I'm doing this." I'm not going to walk in and say, "My mom doesn't have a job." I'm not going to just walk in and self, or ask for a scholarship. It's not going to happen. So I opt out. It's perfect the way it is. But I think as we move forward, we've got to make sure that this is accessible for everyone and there's not an economic hurdle. But you have plenty of notice on something like that, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to do your material, and I have some questions. It seems remarkable that in your material, you said that a hundred percent of the students graduated from high school. That's a remarkable number. Was that planning, program, coincidental, luck? A hundred percent, it's no misses.
Right, I know. And I won't, seventeen pregnancies.
Yeah, I know. That was my next question.
For us, we know, there's research that tells us some standards out there that seventy-five hour commitment, you get them for seventy-five hours, you see these gains. I shared with the staff today those statistics and my goals. But I know there's going to be a fourteen-year-old girl who's going to walk in and join, and she might be with us for three months, and we're going to find out if she's already pregnant. And I'm not going to be able to tell you anymore that our pregnancy rate, zero, for all of our members. I can also tell you, kids who leave and never come back to a club, so our goal is to keep them engaged. The kids who leave and don't stay engaged, disappear at thirteen, maybe not reemerge, not stay connected to the club, do end up pregnant, do end up dropping out of school, do end up in doing all the things that we're talking about. So our job is to keep them connected. And I can tell you, there's only one way I have ever seen it work, is to hire great staff who love what they do, who care about the kids, and build relationships. That's the only thing that works. Either the sixteen-year-old or seventeen-year-old to come to a Boys and Girls Club or the Field Zone, for them to come and making a decision, because they can go anywhere at sixteen or seventeen. So if I have a room full of teens, that means they've made a decision, and not because it's me, it's because there's some staff member that they've connected with, they've made friends, and then they come back. The head of the Tampa Bay Rays, my early baseball system was our very first year of the year, from nineteen fifty-eight. And he says, the things that he learned, the friends that he has, that he created then are still his friends today. So it does work. But I can't promise you that I'll be able to say a year from now, or even tomorrow, that all those statistics are the way they are. But I can promise you today that everything that I said about high school graduation rates, teen pregnancy rates, those two, one hundred percent and zero percent, put the point on.
Now, are you, are you saying that those students that spent a minimum of seventy-five hours are the ones, or anybody?
If they're a current member of the Boys and Girls Club. So, you know, I have seventeen hundred members. Of those seventeen hundred, seventeen and change, of those, five hundred are thirteen years of age and older, so five fifty. All those kids, as they age through, they get to eighteen, they all graduate, they've never been pregnant through their teen years, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Another question in your material, you said that, I'm going to paraphrase this, a significant amount of your revenue comes from the Justice Department?
Actually, the piece that has that is from Boys and Girls Clubs of America. Boys and Girls Clubs of America does receive Justice Department grants that helps, especially in gang-related funding, so national funding.
It's a peremptory.
And it's really focused on reducing the gang problem across the country. So that's not my organization, that's the Boys and Girls.
But you don't get any money from the Justice Department?
We do. We personally do. If we apply for it, it's called pass-through funding, and we do get pass-through funding from the Justice Department. And that's how a lot of clubs have been able to do exactly what we talked about earlier.
Definitely something about the two boards.
Our two boards, initially, the same way that it always has. Our board has always had, we have an executive director, formerly Lauren, now Linda. That is over all the staff, hires, trains, fires staff, and reports to the board. Gives us regular reports as we direct, meets with us and does our, we cast the vision, and the executive director's responsible for carrying the floor. All that will change initially is that Brett now will be the executive director. He's not just the executive director of our club, he's the executive director of all of his clubs, and he's already paid by them, that's one of the beauties. That's one of the first things we'll save, is our executive director's salary, gone. But that's, that's all that will change initially. Where we go in the future, whether our board becomes an advisory board, we don't know that yet. That's what we're going to try to fashion over the next several months.
All right.
Will you put in place possibly a marketing strategy to reach out to the places of worship and the nonprofit organizations to give more exposure that you're here? And because many of them have youth groups that really need to take care of.
We have to. We've got to get the information in front of the people who are in contact with kids. Eventually, kids will tell kids and your bill dependents, at the beginning, the counselors in the schools. We've got to be able to talk to the faith community. We have to be able to talk to parents. So being able to go and working in partnership with the schools, which is a lot of that's in place, and we're doing that now, but just to build on it, where we can come in during parent-teacher conferences and have a table set up. One of the things that we do really effectively, for us at our Royal Oak location alone, we run sixty tutoring matches a week. Not only do we run homework help every day, but sometimes a guy like me needs more than just the homework help, I need a tutor. I need somebody who's going to meet me once a week, because we're mentoring, for example. So now, all of a sudden, I've got somebody who's sitting down and showing me how to get organized, how to stick to something, and tutor. And so the partnership of the schools, the faith community, and then eventually, it becomes kids telling kids, and it will begin to feed off of each other. And you continue to feed all of those other things that you normally would do. But eventually, it does start to take on a life of a tutor.
Lastly, and this may be the deal breaker for me, can you get Dizel Washington to come?
Just to explain. As soon as I get his cell phone number, I keep trying to get it out of him, but I can't.
Actually, you know, you asked that because, for those of you that don't know what she's talking about, he's on their national board. But they have a board, like we have a board, that is larger than ours, more of a, we developed a board to get representation from every facet of the community we could think of. We wanted somebody from the city, somebody from Parks and Rec, somebody from Lathrow, Parks and Rec, somebody from the schools, somebody from the Neighborhood Association, somebody from some of our sponsors. So we, that's how we went out. They've established a more traditional board, where they have donors and they have connectors. And we always say that if you're on a board, you're either a donor, or a doer, or a, help me, what do I always say? Or a door opener. So that, they have that more traditional board. So they, they don't have Denzel on their board, but they have some names that you'd recognize. Actually, and I think five of their board members are in Southfield. So they, the first. Projection.
It's the most recent facility that you opened, that's the Washington Township one. What was that, was that more of a transition on an existing facility, or did you build from the ground up? I guess the heart of my question is, what's more typical for you, building from the ground up or taking, or transitioning an existing facility to what you want it to kind of look like to the community?
This isn't a flip answer at all. We'll do whatever it takes to service this new community. So we have a traditional club in Royal Oak, which is a log cabin. Over decades, each decade, a different donor says, "Well, let me build this, let me build that." And in two thousand and two, a complete renovation that created a senior center and a Boys and Girls Club. That's where I live. Ferndale, we're in a public school, middle school and high school, under the same roof. Only students from there who attend there can come to our club. In Washington Township, we started discussions with the schools, but the schools are hemorrhaging. They don't know what the building structures are going to look like, are they going to have to close some? It just wasn't working in the schools. There, a church came forward, like here in Southfield, and said, "We just want to be of service. We'll open a facility, we're not going to charge you anything, and you come in and operate a Boys and Girls Club in the church." The township supervisor in Washington Township, last week announced that they have a dedicated park note, they're going to be building a senior community center that will house the Boys and Girls Club, and they're projecting that that'll be done now within three years. When we started discussions with them, we didn't even think that, we weren't there with that. So if every community, it can shape its own. I can tell you, we had a Boys and Girls Clubs of America representative in the Field Zone last week. She called me up, she just got home, she lives in Aiden, and she said, "Brett," she said, "I have never seen a facility like that in my life." So she was all excited. So I think what you've done here is something special. I do agree with you. I think what's happened is, it just, a needle has been threaded. And we'll just be grateful that the kids are still going to be able to have the opportunity to participate in what they've come to enjoy.
I'm excited about this partnership coming together.
Yeah, we think it's win-win-win-win for sure for all of us.
A couple of questions. You mentioned, and you sort of already answered it, when you talked about your admission is like twenty dollars membership, and that's not going to change though for the first year? Because at the beginning, I think you just won. Because at the beginning, I think you just want, and then my next question would have been, can we handle that? Because we don't have the capacity for more than three hundred dollars a time. So, I guess that'll be the next phase, we'll find out about, but you need to prepare for that, because I have a feeling this is gonna be something that some like, and it's gonna work. And we would like to see a lot more kids, and I think you're right, with the economy, and so many of our families are out of work, and the kids would love to be near the twenty, thirty dollars, that's a lot of money to come in. And we have several kids, so.
The other thing we're sensitive to, sorry, the other thing that we're sensitive to is that this is change, you know? And it's change at the holiday thing? So, I don't wanna layer on too much change at the, all at once. So, all of a sudden, you know, I want folks, kids were coming to see familiar faces. I want everything to work like it always has, so that they can get, move through this period of time and go, okay, this is working, and then start, we can look at things and tweak them.
I agree with that, and you have to see how you can handle what's there now, but it needs longer than that for years. We don't want those things to be obstacles to being available, I know you know that, and I'm a sure. The other question I have is, you mentioned this church that has something started or tied to, and it runs Southfield? And you said they had nine separate sites, are they using for this?
No, I hadn't, I had to open there, because they'd approached us, and I would, you know, I'd get these calls all the time, so I was expecting to go over and see a place that just wasn't gonna work, similar to when he called me. He said, it's in the basement. I'm gonna drive over, and, you know, and I thought, oh, you know, I'm betting myself, twenty kids, fifteen kids, walk into the center, probably eight kids, go down there, and the place is filled, and the energy is great. So, the money that was set aside was the money that intended to open there, that I had secured, which we just moved to.
Two other questions, middle school, you want, I mean, we have most of the middle school now, but you want middle school and high school eventually, if you're correct. And you talked a lot about the high school, so I just wanted to get that covered. And my last question is, you go for outside grants, who's the?
Today, we have to. I was meeting with Linda Neighbors, who's the interim executive director, and who's part of her heart and soul into what she's doing there. And in the middle of the meeting, we had a wonderful grant that I got, received an email from Comcast. It was interesting, we had to add the money from Comcast and a grant that had been done, and they had extra money at the end of the year. And they called and said, we got some extra money. Didn't even have to write that.
And we've been talking that for two years, can't get anything out of them.
And now that we said that, I'll knock on wood, because probably they're all gonna.
Well, I mean, you know, there's corporations that will do that, you ask them and they make it one time. But some of these grants that you can get from foundations, that's what I would.
They have a full-time development director on their staff.
I heard that, I got that stat.
Yeah, I'm sure you would have picked that up, yeah.
Well, I'm very, I'm very, certainly definitely are.
I'd like to, did you have a question?
I'm trying to make a motion.
Yeah, well, I was gonna just refer to our legal department to work with the two units that we have here, and.
They were asking, the goal was to get a rule ten tonight, to approve the consent, subject to whatever terms we could, you know, we talked about, we put in this agreement to allow the subcontractors.
You need to vote in, I'll support it.
I make a motion, yes.
I'll support it.
Motion by Mr. Jordan, supported by Ms. Caffey, do we need a, do a?
No. Not at all, it's a consent proposal. That is true, that the consent states that we will, before this, what did you call it, soon?
Subcontractor, the operation.
That should be received to the legal department, and do that, so.
Well, again, because of the timing, they were, they were asking that you approve the mayor. Right.
Because I was, I had a timing down here on my paper, because we don't have a meeting until after the first of the year. So, I didn't know what kind of a time frame we had.
And frankly, we'll probably be back to you, well, hopefully with an update in three or four months, but within the next six to twelve months, we'll be back saying, okay, here's what we've fashioned, now we want you to bless that, going forward.
Okay, so is it down, giving the motions, supported by Mr. Cyberg, we'll do a rule call, go on, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Mr. Fracasti?
Yes.
Mr. Cyberg?
Yes.
Mr. Ma?
Yes.
Mr. Leah?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Yeah, seven members.
Thank you very much.
I just wanna say, I know I came in late in the discussion, but I was aware that the Boys and Girls Club, we have had conversations a number of times about wanting you in the city of Southfield. I certainly have a conversation, and I'm so excited that this happened. And I look forward to, you know, the vision that we have for our community, and you are, you are a great keeper of that, thank you so much.
And if I can, thank you again, I wasn't here for the meeting where you approved the one-night liquor license. Thank you for that, it was awesome. For those of you that were there, thank you for your support, I know some of you have been sponsored, and some of you bought tickets. It was awesome. And everybody said, when are you gonna do this again? It was really good, thanks for that, too. Yeah, the kids were unbelievable. Yeah, we will.
Okay, and that's the title we have done now, for Carpenter Lake Nature Reserve, and Carpenter Lake Funding Succession. We need to, if we wanna accept money, we discuss this with our community, and, and, let me turn you into a helper. In our charter, in order to accept money, we have to set up a fund, special account, dedicated to this project, which is for this project, in order to be able to accept money from anybody that's present.
Well, there's two charter provisions that would be applicable here. Number one, if it is the council under section four point one of the charter, that accepts donations of gifts, of money, that's one section. There's another section in the charter that says, that the council may establish a trust. And this trust fund would then be the kind of depository of money that was coming in for a special purpose. And so, you can establish a trust for the Carpenter Lake nature reserve. Then, as money is donated, the council would accept that money and place it into this trust that's reserved for that purpose. So, really, both sections would be, would be implied.
How do we, how do we do that, if we have to make a?
To establish the trust, under?
We need two separate motions?
Well, the trust you established now, if you have a donation ready to go into it, that would then be a separate motion to accept that donation. So, the trust could be established independent of any particular donation right now, and you could just establish the trust. Then, as money comes in, the council would receive and accept that donation and place it into the trust.
Okay, I mentioned before that we had a fudge from a company, and we do have a fudge from your corporation, a hundred thousand dollars, and we want to be able to accept that, and know about them. So, I guess we could all have.
No, no, this is just a city trust fund.
That's a separate one.
Right, right.
So, we need a motion to establish?
I'd move, I need a rule ten.
We do need a rule ten.
I'd move a rule ten.
Motion by Mr. Cyberg, supported by Ms. Jordan, and we need to ask, we want a little ten, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, I think it's fair.
And I would move the creation of a trust fund for the Carpenter Lake Interpretive Center, supported.
Motion by Mr. Cyberg, supported by Mr. Ma, we need a little call, please.
I have a comment, too. This was brought up at the council meeting, collaboration with other communities, and by the mayor, and setting up some kind of account to raise funds for the senate. And my question is, we just heard the gentleman from Boys and Girls Club speak about how important grants are, because that's where they're getting their money. And we're turning down a million two in grants on this project. So, this committee that's gonna be formed, it's gonna have, before you make a penny, what we already have, it's gonna have to raise a million two to make a deal. And that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, how can you turn down a million two for, it's money in your hands, for this development? And you heard the gentleman also say, in Washington, you're building a senior community house or something? I mean, people are doing things today. I mean, the economy, you know, you can go back and see seventies, eighties, nineties, two thousands, you know, you had ups and downs in the economy, but it did not stop us from doing anything. We built the jail, we built the court, and we built the pavilion, all when the economy was going up, and not when it was coming down. And that whole facility was, it was seventeen million dollars. And because your prices are right, there's competition, with the contractors and the bids come in right. And so, you know, I, I just am really disappointed in the fact that we didn't, I go ahead, and like I said, you know, I know council differed, mayor differed, everybody differed, that three unions come in, four unions come in from different parts of Michigan that come in and speak against, I don't know what possibly they would want to come in to my city, our city, and stop a project. I mean, we don't go to their cities and stop projects. And to give their place where they reside, I don't see anything wrong with that either, mayor. Because, you know, sometimes, you know, you have to know where the people are coming from, that are commenting on what the city is and how it's gonna be developed. And I think that we're the ones that are supposed to make the decision on what we wanna build, and not an outsider. This is our city. And we have a million two in our hands. And I just don't get it, how you can now form a committee? And you see what Field Zone went through. I mean, they went busted trying to raise money with corporations. The timing for corporations is wrong, but there's gonna be a lot of grants federally that are gonna be available. Because that's how, within the bound term, that's how we were able to build the pavilion, the court, and the police station, and jails, because they made bring out bound term money available to get the economy going. And we made grants to raise the money to build those facilities. And that's the same thing you have here. I don't know how long it's gonna take you to raise the million two, I don't think they'll ever raise it, to be honest with you. And if you're willing to raise the million two, you're gonna have to pay, not a million two, but you're gonna have to pay another nine hundred thousand dollars. I think the balance I do is two point four million for the building, so, something like that, was that correct?
Two point one.
Two point one? So, you have more than half in your hands. So, I just wanna make that comment, because I don't get it. I just don't get it. There's families, there's homes that are vacant, you wanna bring young families in here? I mean, how are you gonna showcase a city that either is a place for families if you don't do things for families? And you heard people get up at the council meeting, talk about how their families and children enjoy these kinds of things. You have to go somewhere else. So, but generally, I see the council divided, for whatever reason, they voted the way they voted, and I respect their vote, but I just, as a businessman, a councilman, and a guy that's very involved in building a lot of things in the city, if somebody gave me a million two, I would be blessed. That's all I have to comment.
On Mr. Cyberg, what can you?
I think along with this trust, we need to create, and I don't think this is gonna be done tonight, but I think we need to seek nominations, or self-nominations, whatever, for a friends of Carpenter Lake associations that would be charged with raising money. I've received emails from people who said they would be willing to contribute. A lot of things get built with small contributions. Personally, I think that this needs to be built with private money, and at this time. And so, just to create a trust fund isn't enough. I mean, I think that's one step we need to take. I think the other step is to have, whatever you wanna call it, friends of Carpenter Lake, having a structure in place which would seek donations for either the nature center itself, or additional interpretive stations at Carpenter Lake.
You're talking about the five one two three, there was some stuff, I think. I think that's something I would like to refer to finance group, to study some of these possible arrangements, because we can't make all that hurt a night, but.
No.
Do we have a fight this way? Oh, we do?
Yes, but will that of all these, some of the, what's next?
But my point is, I think we need some staff on this committee, I think we need environmentalists in the community, there are people that have offered, or expressed an interest, and perhaps, there's been news people on the council that would like to be on such a group. But, we, and I look to the chamber, we've got a new person who's going to add a new direction to the chamber, and maybe through networking, or our business development staff, our Parks and Rec staff, there might be some other untapped things. I find that we haven't, in my experience, and I'll just speak for my experience here, we have done, we tend to tap the same major companies and businesses all the time. And they've been damn good about supporting various causes. But there are a whole number of others out there that I don't think have ever been asked. And I think that's true for the community foundation as well. There are people that do businesses in this city, that don't have a law degree, but do a lot of business, whether they're a legal firm, or an engineering firm, whatever they are. There are various vendors that work with the city and the schools and so on, that could be asked, you know, not armed with it, but invited to support this project. I just don't think we've done enough combing the bushes to find the funds. And I, and I still think the door is open to future state and federal grants, or something like that. So, that's my take on it. I'd like to see the committee.
Well, we have to have a discussion on what, how, and what.
Yeah, and that's fine. So, I didn't expect that, you know, last week, we talked about where we go from here. And so, that's what I'm trying to speak to, as future-looking, where we're going from here. That there's, the interest is there, it's just how it's, how it's funded.
Well, that's why we're having discussions, number one, we set up this fund, that we can accept money, that people have fudged, or might wanna give us, we have to do that by charter, we have to accept that money, and we have to place the holder until.
And that's why I made the rule ten, and I'm prepared to make, once we vote on the rule ten, prepared to make a second, and have a motion. Correspondent.
Well, um.
We have a rule ten.
Right, oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't voted on it yet, because we're having discussions.
I actually have a question about some of the, what, when the council voted last week, did that affect the one hundred and forty thousand dollars from the EPA, or is that still, is that ready to go into the fund right now? Is that, or is that a reimbursement?
I haven't had a chance to have a discussion in detail.
Okay.
But it was earmarked for this project.
Okay.
Whether it could be transferred to another use, we'll check on that. Is it reimbursement?
Yes, reimbursement grant, but it would have to be spent in immediate future, so both the grants would be canceled.
Would be immediate future.
Um, in the next year.
So, we still have that money?
They would be looking for us to sign the project agreement, committing to the project in the next, you know, they were expecting that this month. So, if you're not moving forward with the bid right now, and the construction right now, that'll, that'll just cancel out.
Can we reapply?
Um, yeah, you can reapply for that grant. That is a short-term grant program, that they keep adding a few more rounds, but it's not an indefinite thing like the trust fund.
It's a form of the committee, I think it was said, that it's a step different than E D B. But when he told you, you don't have to get executive people who have businesses on their board, who can open the doors, have internal people who meet on a regular basis, and in the business world, to tap them. My suggestion, if you vote that, uh. Uh, my suggestion, if you vote that, uh, is to have, uh, that type of a board and that, that's what we, through the discussion, we need, uh, name the, the finance committee. Uh, the other point I still want to make is if you're going to form a committee and you're going to go out and, and offer the grants, you've got a million two in your grants right now. I mean, why would you start from scratch again? You've got a million two in your pocket, and now you're going to start it, you, and say, okay, now we have a two point one million dollar goal. And I, I, as a businessman, I heard that, and I said, well, why did you turn to me? Now we've got to go right over it, reapply, and if you may get it, may not. I mean, you know, whatever council tags up, I mean, it depends on whether you want it or not because you're not going to raise the money, and there's no way, we've gone through these things.
That's your opinion.
A thousand times, you've seen the Field Zone go through this, and everything that we touched that, that has this kind of a thrust has lost.
I agree with you, you need some corporate-type people on that, I agree with you, that, that have a vision for the environment.
And they're going to ask you, if there's people like I know, how could you turn down a million two?
And there's, and there's an answer, there's an answer to that.
Okay, I'd like to know an answer because I can't stand that in my world.
The answer is, uh, uh, at least three people on the council didn't approve, or feel comfortable with the funding mechanism.
Well, what if, what if the funding mechanism was you take the million two and then go form this, this corporation committee to raise nine hundred thousand? It'd be simpler to ra- raise the nine hundred thousand and tell somebody we've got to raise two million one. In English, I'm going to drop it.
I'll wait a second till I move him.
Is that your question?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you make the motion, who's second?
Jerry.
Jerry, okay. Um, did you want to, can I just say something before you?
I, I, I'm struggling not to recast the conversation, so I, I'll just let it go.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Sander, uh, with the first amendment to the law, uh, on the rule ten, that's my opinion.
This is for the creation of a trust fund?
Yes, no, it's a rule ten.
You've already voted on the rule.
Oh, you voted on the rule.
You voted on the rule.
All right, and then we have a motion to, uh, we had discussion earlier, uh, um, to form a tr- a trust, uh, for the Carpenter Lake, the trust fund.
That's why I'm opening it up. We had a motion, I was checking, but we had a motion to establish a trust fund to be made by Ken and, uh, then...
I just, I would suggest that we, um, we have to go to the finance committee first. Then we'll go into the option of the trust.
No, we, no, we have, we have to do this because we've got something waiting. Either we have to accept, or we're not going to be able to get this money. We have to establish this first.
All right, so it's just a generic proposal?
No, it's just we're establishing the fund so that we can accept money. We started, we started with the established trust fund. Or to accept money.
All right.
All right, so we have a motion and we support, all in favor.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, motion's carried. The idea that, that the other committees, I'm for Carpenter Lake or whatever, and the five oh one C three, I'm going to refer to the financials to further study with staff, and then you'll, you can come back and start a discussion with them.
Did you want to have a motion to accept the donation that currently, yeah, that wa- that has not been donated?
Okay, okay, we need a motion to accept the hundred thousand dollars.
We still need a rule ten, a rule ten, I'll support it.
All right, motion of Mr. Sander, supported by Mr. Thompson, to adopt the rule ten, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and we need a motion to accept the hundred thousand dollar trust from the corporation. Motion, Mr. Lance, for the Mr. Sander, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's excellent, um...
The, um, collaboration between other communities, um, I would like the council to support that as, as, um, you know, the scorecard that determines whether we get all of our, our, um, state share revenue depends on us showing that we're trying to collaborate. Um, the city administration would need direction from or support from the council to do that.
Well, that could be a consensus, so let's explore that, since we're...
All right, um, we have some other items that I'm going to put, uh, maybe submit shortly, but, uh, even a consensus would be good, because I want to include this thing. All you have to do is show intent. So this is showing intent, and so the consensus would be right.
All right, so, uh, this is going to go on, so what we can help, what we do, show the... What I assume.
Show it. All right.
And that is, that is a physical, um, nature center facility. Um, I volunteer for the Royal Nations Society.
No, 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 please, please, no, no, I can't, I'm not, you can't just speak for me. Listen, let me, let me answer the question, okay? Tomington Hills has a nature center. Knights and Heights have a nature center. They do operate these. Uh, Troy, I don't know, Troy changed something, but they have like five or six full-time people, which others, most of them don't do that. Uh, there are a number of communities who work with the, the internet, the nature centers in Orange County, quite a, quite a few of them. They operate that. They operate that.
Are they, are they operated out of their operating budget, out of their general fund?
Well, I don't know, they are, but, well, I don't know what fund, it doesn't say, but some of them, most of them do have memberships available, or like a small admittance fee.
Cause I know that, uh, we've, we've tried several things that are, and I'm gonna go Vince Lombardi, that, uh, outside of blocking and tackling, the basic things that we do. For instance, our, our, our Center for the Arts, uh, we thought that we knew what we were doing, and, I mean, that was a money pit. Uh, we, we were forced into buying condos. Those turned out to be, uh, money going the wrong direction. So, we don't do a very good job of, of running stuff that's not basic city business. So, uh, for us to get involved in this, and take that on as, uh, something, that's why I asked the question. Are others, are other municipalities funding these out of their general fund? Or are they getting money from someplace else, and it just got their name on the, on the front of it?
Well, I know the Tomington Hills funds are owned, I know they have, and they do use volunteers for the programs. They did, uh, because of the economy, what they had a naturalist that they let go, but they've got volunteers to do their programs. Uh, other communities, volunteers are used a lot, because they're people that are passionate about what their programs are doing. Um, but you'll find that's very common. The difference is University of Michigan, most of their students are in that environmental program. Um, it's very common. The, um, what's my thing of thought? Um, we said, oh, we don't do very well operating like things. When we took on, uh, what became the Center for the Arts, it has been, we have agreed to buy it, and then had deteriorated so much that we were bought, and we had to replace, you know, a lot of infrastructure, all of the heating and cooling and the books, we had to do a lot. So, that was, that became a much bigger issue. But in terms of the, the two hundred dollar mortgage, that was given to the Parks and Recreation Department, and I think it should have gone to either the facility or the general fund, because it, it was a string in their budget.
Well, it doesn't matter, cause it just went backwards.
But I think-
It's, it's all tax dollars, and it was going backwards. That's why we had to get rid of it.
That's the matter. Anyway, um-
I'm sorry, I have to check it out.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked the question.
Part of the research for the finance committee, uh, we can, we can find out, uh-
What's the best way to do this? That's the whole thing, right?
How they're organized, where the money comes from, et cetera. Some neighboring, uh, facilities.
I wanna do it, and I wanna do it right if we're gonna do it. I just don't wanna make it a short-term thing where we build this two, two million dollar thing, and it's open two days a week. You know, that just doesn't make any sense at all.
And we shouldn't have done it in the first place. We're going after you. All right, um, we have, uh, a couple-
Uh, before we leave this, um, part of the issue that the council really brought up was our existing facilities when it came to Parks and Rec. And I really want a review, the current, um, a review of our current facilities, a priority set by administration of Parks and Rec and the, uh, board, of what we, what we need to bring our facilities up to the standard that, um, we would expect in the city. And what are those priorities, and what are the budgets, so we know where that Parks and Rec budget is going. Because that, that season that's getting thrown out is seven million dollars, sitting in the bank that they have in the vest.
Now, six.
Now, six million, so-
Sun balance?
And the projection that, I know last year they took eight hundred out of that sun balance. So, there was a lot of things that during this discussion, it was all over the place. We need some facts and some reality. And Parks and Rec needs, you know, I, I heard that they were told not to spend it, that's why there were no investments in facilities, and then I'm told that they just fed on the money. So, we, we need some real facts.
There is no seven million handle on that, not in the capital.
There's some real facts, and we need to see what are the priorities for facilities? Do we have the money to do it? And it needs to be, just like we do our budgets, it needs to be at least a five-year plan for Parks and Rec, that they have a separate knowledge, so that we know where we're going with that.
Absolutely. Now, we're, we've already had discussions that, uh, this, this year's budget, and the total analysis needed for Parks and Recreation, uh, is gonna be more exhaustive than probably was, uh, in the, in recent history, if not in recorded history. Parks, Parks and Recreation was, uh, we need, we need a full watch, we need exactly what kind of what is done through the general fund. We had to address the general fund first, because that's life or death, that's part of that public safety. Police fire, everyday, uh, services, uh, Parks and Recreation is important, uh, and we get, we make the impression, uh, it deserves, uh, both the numbers and the backing itself. We need, we need a full look at-
Yeah, where does the Parks Master Plan fit in your own?
It's part of, it's part of where, it's part of the review. Uh, that's, there's priorities set in the master plan. Uh, some are, some are, uh, more ruleless variety, some are more, uh, pragmatic, uh, so we need to take a look and bring that into the picture too. First and foremost, you need a five-year look at, what are your operations gonna look like? What are your revenues going to be? As, as we know, the next two years, next year we're looking at eleven percent drop in, in taxable values, so far. I hope, uh, some one in more persons is that number wrong. But that's the number that I've been using, that's the number we've been using since July fourth, when we, uh, when I updated the, the financial plan to the general fund. And we did that based on information from the Equalization Director, uh, Oakland Equalization, and interpolation of other economic information. Uh, I'm hoping that number, uh, is totally pessimistic, but so far I don't have anyone to, to counter it. The lowest number I've heard is eight percent, so it's, it's gonna be a drop that's significant. The year after that, we're looking at another drop. Okay? Hopefully that's wrong too. I have to keep hoping that my number is wrong, just cause I don't believe so. Uh, then we're looking to, for, uh, leveling out and hopefully, uh, some increases. So, we have to look at that five-year look very closely, and then we have to, uh, go and look at our capital program, um, up against, uh, that, that, uh, the, the resources, the availability, et cetera.
And, and, I, I didn't wanna re核, but Jim, that's what's tying the concern that I had, that if we're using sun balances to, to balance our books, and you're saying eleven percent decrease, we could build the most beautiful facilities, but we're still gonna have to operate it. And operating times are coming from a already established deficit in Parks and Rec. And so, tied to the, what the finance committee needs to look at is not only the construction of this, where are we gonna be with being able to fund it and operate it? And if we're using, we're taking almost a million dollars down from last year with the crisis that we're having, and we're gonna have eleven percent decrease already on top of that. And, and that's why we just, we, we just have to do it right there, and build it when we can afford it.
Hi, Calfield, I think I was just wondering, we have two people to ask.
Yeah, I have one thing that I'd like to say, nothing, other, other, and, and I'd like to have our city administrator ask the, uh, cable people to, uh, to give us a, a, and they used to give us what programs, what time and what days they're on, so that we can find different programs. I mean, I turned it on just before I came here, we got fixed wise, telling you how to make copies. I mean, this is ridiculous.
I, I submitted to that myself for hours. Told it, told it.
And they, they have money enough to make this, kind of, on ya? Chamber of Commerce. It's, it's, uh, it's their business and not ours, it's just-
Um, all right. Mr. Phil, can you just-
Yes, uh, hold agreement on that.
Just some strangers?
Yes, uh, I'm on the, the board of Common Grounds, and the executive director, Tony Rothschild, called me the other day, and said that, uh, they're gonna apply for a grant, it's a, uh, very, very large grant, but it's going to be a grant that's divided by different groups around the country. And one of the things they're gonna, the, the thing that they're going to study is obesity. And, uh, they need the, uh, the cooperation of schools, of the medical field, a nonprofit, and the community, the city, the municipality. And he asked me if, if, if I thought that Southfield would be interested in being part of this, this grant. And I can't tell you any details about it, because, uh, I was driving in my car when he, when he called me, and I didn't make any notes. But I said, uh, I would bring it up at the, at the council meeting, but I thought that we would be, probably eager to get involved in something like this, that, and I talked with, uh, Monica Robinson, and she's, she is also very, uh, positive about anything about the fact, she named a school that might be one of the schools that they'd take a look at, cause they wanna look at, elementary school. I don't know, I, I can't, at this point in time, I can't tell you. I called Tony again today, he was out, so I can't, uh, and when he called me, it was on the weekend, it was, uh, Friday, Friday afternoon. And, uh, I called him today, and he was out, and didn't return my call, but, uh, it's something that, uh, I would urge us to, to get involved in, especially if it's, uh, gonna show our new governor that we are cooperating with other entities and, uh-
What do you recommend we do, and how do we get into it?
Well, uh, there's gonna be a meeting on the tenth of January, uh, where, all the details, but I will continue to, to talk to him and bring back whatever details he can tell me about, so that we'll know, kind of, what we're getting into.
Okay.
And for, for those, yes, uh, if you give me a phone number, we're, we're going to, uh, be more than de minimis. We're gonna give a lot of stuff to the pressure, uh, things that we've been doing for years. There's about two hundred programs that we have. We take everything we do, every, every mutual aid, uh, the Employment Career Center, which services, you know, multiple counties, et cetera, so you'll know, you'll register the list.
Okay, I don't have his phone number with me, but I'll get to tell you.
We, uh, you know, for those here that, uh, the public, uh, there are three required, there are, are three different things required for the city to get their statutory revenue sharing, which used to be by formula, but is now, uh, has different, different requirements. And one of them is, uh, the, uh, the dashboard, and it'll be done, uh, statistics, and the citizens guide on the website. Second is the cooperative adventures, and the third, uh, has to do with, um, labor and other, other matters that come later on. So, we already have received our, uh, stipend, but number, number one, it's about three hundred dollars involved, and we will, we'll get it for this too.
And I'll, I'll give you the information. Excuse me, and incidentally, uh, Common Grounds is not a stranger to the city of Southfield. Our police department, for the past several years, has trained with, on their, uh, uh, the, uh, crisis line, on how to deal with people in crisis, which helps them on the street when they, when they have a, uh, crisis situation, and how to negotiate with people that are, that are, uh, out of sorts. So, it's, uh, it's been a, a good relationship between the city of Southfield, uh, especially the police department, and, uh, Common Grounds.
All right. I have something disturbing to tell you. Last Friday, you know where I live, Albinwood, the school bus stopped right in front of me. They led off about twenty-five, thirty kids, is the most I've ever seen, one time. There was a one heavy boy, much the way two hundred pounds, and he got off with the kids, and he started to rip their coats off and jackets off. All of them were small. And he, I was in my car, driving by, and I said, what are you doing? Why are you doing that to the kids? He didn't know what he was, he kept tearing their coats off, man. Friday afternoon. Now, the bus driver said nothing, I don't know if he looked or anything. That's serious. That big boy was bullying the little ones. He was ripping their coats off. I think, uh, Ken Cyler, you should say something to-
You should, I don't-
I know, you have the connections in sports.
I can hear you, I can hear you.
No problem, nothing talking to me. I'm too aggressive, huh? Okay? Well, I witnessed-
I think it's late, bud.
Yeah, I know.
You can charm her.
This is what I witnessed, and what can we do about it?
We've been notified the police department-
Yeah, we've got a name on one.
We've been notified the police department to, uh, follow up on that.
We've been so notified. We've been so notified, I think you're-
All right. I can give you the time, the bus stopped, you'd be able to find out who the bus was and the driver. Three o'clock this past Friday.
I'm sure I'll get with it.
Who do I see there?
No, I didn't see them either.
Um, are you finished?
Yeah.
Um, it's my-
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to bring, um, some news down from our state legislature, especially as it pertains to what we deal with day-to-day in Southfield, charter schools. Last week, uh, the House had passed Senate Bill six eighteen, um, which eliminates, uh, the cap of one hundred and fifty on the number of charter schools that can be chartered by universities, starting in twenty fifteen. And it, it now allows three hundred, allowed in twenty twelve, five hundred in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. Um, and, you know, we, Representative Hobbs voted against it, and so did, uh, Senator Gregory. He actually tried to offer some, uh, some amendments that were gonna talk about quality control of these charter schools, including that they can't stop operating in the middle of the year, because that's, there's no provision for that, and it's happened in our state before. And, um, disallow an operator from operating a school if you have a certain number that are, are failing throughout, throughout the, the state. So, I just wanted to bring that forward. Two-thirds of Oakland County's charter schools are in Southfield. Um, and with, and we're, we're an attractive city for it, for whatever reason. So, with this cap elimination, it's gonna be on their radar again, look at Southfield. So, I just wanted to bring that forward, and keep monitoring it. They, they did form a subcommittee that was going to specifically tackle the quality of the charter schools, quality provisions, that's still coming forward, but the legislation as written does eliminate the cap now.
And it doesn't, doesn't restrict the location also?
Mm-hmm, yeah. There was some stuff in it that eliminates restrictions on where charter schools could be located. I don't know the exact restriction that I can bring it to, but I mean, that's, that's big for about, that's big for Southfield.
We have one other item, uh, that, that this could be with the legislative, we have one other item that, uh, we need some attention to, that has to do with the courts, you know, Judge, Judge Russell. Um, it has to do with, uh, court revenues, and how they're dispersed, and according to the court administrator, uh, it could cost us five hundred thousand dollars revenues. So, um, I, I'd like that to, uh, the city clerk's office, uh, to, you know, to, as a, as a potential item for finance committee, I mean, the legislative.
Good for finance committee, too.
Don't you, uh, let you on this, to get all the alerts on Senate bills, you get those, you know, you should get on that.
Michigan votes.
Yeah.
Uh, wasn't there a, a cap on the number of charter schools that Detroit could have?
Yeah.
And that's why I think they came to Southfield, because it's, you know, just across the border, but if they took the cap off, there might be a-
Well, the way they wrote it, I believe, was for cities under, over a million, and then Detroit sells below a million. Um, but the reason they did come here was they were selling suburban spaces, and they built Inkster, all around Warren to Inkster and, uh, Down River. They surrounded Detroit with charter schools, and we got nice.
Yeah.
Seems like foster care, because we have EMS, it gets there in four minutes.
And big houses.
And, um, I've got two requests to be recognized, and I told them that they could, if it was something kind of, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, we'll go to that.
Anyway, Gina, I have a question. I know you've recognized two individuals, not noticed a lot of reasons, but different people from the audience coming, uh, please, please, come speak here. I don't know if that's something that we need to put in terms of, uh, rules and procedures, but that, that, I'm familiar with that previously being on council, with the public, which is constantly, comes to the table and interrupts the news, and I don't think-
We haven't, we really haven't, that's really rare. I remember, usually at a recess, people would come and come to him and, 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 but no, no, I'm sure we have that. Um, the concept has been suggested, and I'm going to, uh, I believe, you can show that I'm going to have you participate in the minister, about that, cause I think it's a good idea, um, that could help solve the problem.
Help with getting answers from you.
All right, I'm going to recognize, um, Ms. Tompkins. You want me to come forward? And, and, you know, with the name and stuff, we'll have final.
I'll give my address to the city clerk.
That's fine.
Okay, but my name is Pamela Jerk. You know, I'm, I'm just sitting here, like, and my mind is, like, totally blown on a couple of issues. The first issue, and this is regarding the comment about passing the notes. We just had a gentleman that didn't even live in this area, outburst and start talking to you guys, and got your attention in reference to a nature center, and that particular information about Roy Lope. Now, if you're gonna address passing the notes to council people, which people have freely done, and I don't know if there's anything in Roberts Rule of Order that speaks to that, make sure you address the comments from a person that has not been recognized by the council president. That would be most appropriate and procedural as well. Now, we are talking about this, this grant money for the nature center, and Councilman Fracassi said, "We are blessed," with a capital B, "to get money for a grant." Let me recall the blessing from FEMA. Two point one, and I was corrected, and I apologize for all the times that I've talked about the grant. I said it was a two point two, I was corrected tonight that it was a two point one. Are we not equally as blessed to get a two point one million dollar grant from FEMA for our firefighters? I am insulted when we talk about all these things we're doing for a community and trying to revitalize Southfield. Let me refresh your memory from an economic development standpoint. You can do all the real estate showcasing, you can give away all the houses at a, at a crazy price, which is good for first-time homebuyers, but a community is only as strong as its public safety, police, fire, and EMS. Now, how blessed are we to get the grant for the nature center, but we're not blessed to get the firefighter's grant to bring back the firefighters? And then I wanted to correct Councilwoman Jordan, at the last televised meeting, you said the library costs thirty-seven billion. I thought I heard you say with a B, it was thirty-seven million with an M. And if you remember, the library cost an additional eight hundred thousand, because one of these council people sitting at this table held up the project. And I'm sure you were one of the ones that was equally as upset as the residents were about that extra eight hundred thousand dollars. Let me also refresh your memory, we had an opportunity, and you guys discounted what I said, we had an opportunity to buy Carpenter Lake for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Another member at this table sent the grant back. A church bought the Carpenter Lake for the same price, and sold it to the city for one million dollars. Are we making the most frugal financial decisions? I don't think so. So, while you're pushing this interpretive center that the mayor has already vetoed, while you're setting up all this fancy schmancy financing, why can't we set up the same trust if you guys don't have the courage or the gall to accept that two point one grant for our firefighters? That's an insult. That's an insult. So, now, can the residents, uh, Madam Attorney, set up the same type of trust to go hit these same companies up, especially the ones that got tax abatements like Lear, twenty-four million? Can we hit them up for trust money for our firefighters? Since you guys don't have the courage to accept the two point one million. And I would like an answer, please, while I'm up here, so I can do a follow-up. Can she answer, Madam Chair? No. Oh, okay. Well, maybe you'll answer it off the record, or maybe I can get Mr. Barris to answer it. But I'm, I'm really upset. There's a standard for certain people, there's a standard for certain companies, there's a standard for certain projects. And if you guys really want a standard, if you really wanna put a Southfield standard in place, you ought to write a mission statement, just like you got strategic goals on all the, the walls in the city of Southfield, write up a Southfield standard. Put some concrete things on there. Say what we're gonna be a conduit to and for. And until you do that, don't- Did you just want to say something, Ms. Jordan?
I wasn't talking to you.
Oh, okay, but I mean, I'm asking for, uh, the council's attention, and it seems like you're more, more focused on the time. It hasn't quite been five minutes, cause she will tell me very, very, very strategically that my time is up. But thank you again for the distraction and all of the other stuff, I really appreciate it, since we're talking about procedure and appropriateness and proper protocol, as I was saying. I'm really upset. I wish you guys would stop, look, listen, and think, and think about the decisions that you're making in the city.
I'm just, I'm just, uh-
I heard you. I wanted to finish my statement. Proper procedure.
Uh, the next person, uh, that has to be recognized is Ms. Stephanie English. She asked me if she can put these posters up, I guess.
No.
No?
I, I don't, I mean, I don't feel, that's that protocol, we've never done it.
Well, that's on the provision, uh, was, was, like, Richard Melster, when he was my leader.
Yeah, and other people have done that, I've seen other residents do that. Sure have. Sure have.
Other residents, I'm gonna push you forward.
Sure have.
Just about. I'm at the side, pressing for you to allow this. Stay here. Uh, Ms. English, it's, it's, I think you can hear me with the microphone, if you need something to post, you can post that one rather than post all, if you need it for parking.
I may want to clarify, I'm here as a gentleman holding a lady's flip jar, I did. The opinions expressed by Ms. English are not necessarily-
I understand that, you're just a good woman, but I, but I, I need to clarify that whatever you do with posting, it's in place for five minutes, I have to go by the rules. Five minutes means what you're, you know, whatever you said that you, oh, just, sorry.
Do you want me to wait till January for the meeting? I mean, I can do it better, I can put it on a flash drive or whatever. I, I was, I emailed you guys to have an opportunity. Nobody responded except you and Cyler, and it is important information about the election of our police chief. And every time I come, I was last at the last meeting, eleven forty is when I came on, and it seems like a disparate treatment. I've never been competitive with, never, I follow the rules.
You're missing up your time, but I'm just going through this.
Okay, you're asking me a question, what are you asking me? Cause go back-
If you want, if you wanted to come back in January, that's fine, if you want to do that.
Okay, let me, let me-
But I'm trying to explain that five minutes includes whatever displays are done up in the time it takes, it's all set up.
Okay. I know when I push back, but I, I want-
No, I'm not trying to be rude to you, but we're doing it for anyone, so.
So, you're saying that he can't hold those up?
He can, but, but that's all part of your five minutes.
Well, I mean, he's just sort of stuck along the wall, they'll get pick them up.
I'd only want you to put up the ones that you need, because I don't want-
I, I did, I, I just put those two or three up, and I, I was, I was gonna use it in my-
No, no, you're okay, but when he starts doing it, that becomes part of your five minutes. Huh? When he starts doing it, that becomes part of your time, he's gonna need it. I'm telling you, I'm not trying to be rude to you, but you're taking up time doing this, your time is just being used up.
Guys are changing the rules.
I know, we're not, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just-
Well, let me have a second. This is my third time coming to the council, November twenty-eighth and December the twelfth, pertaining to the time card embezzlement- pertaining to the time card embezzlement allegations against Brian Gerald. Um, you gave a statement, it did last, it's November twenty eighth. You read a statement or memo dated December first of Jim Charette that Chief Thomas had actually conducted the investigation on Brian Gerald in two thousand nine. I have a, a passed out, uh, private letter or confidential memo that actually, on page two, reports that Brian Gerald actually conducted his own investigation and when these allegations were reported by Nick Lucia originally on that time that Chief Thomas dismissed those allegations. My contention is that someone is not telling the truth. If Chief Thomas, as stated in the December first memo that was read by Joan Seymour at the December twelfth meeting, if that is the case, then someone is not telling the truth. Brian Gerald admits here that he conducted his own investigation, changed the time report, and actually, and in this, in this letter, he said that, uh, Joe Thomas dismissed the allegations. Why would a person have to commence an investigation on themselves if their boss dismisses, dismisses it as rumor? Sometimes a guilty conscience needs no accuser. He admits that he found four days of the allegations, of the thirty plus allegations. If he found four and he was allowed to change the records, his own records, then that's where the illegality comes in. I just have two questions. The memo that you read from on December twelfth says that Joe Thomas did conduct the investigation. I have done several FOIA reports, we can end the FOIA reports. All I wanna know is if a proper investigation was done, Chief Thomas has paperwork. If it was not done, there is no paperwork. That's it, period. If, if a proper, and, and the concept comes in is Brian Gerald admits to investigating himself and altering the records pertaining to the allegations against him. Here's the proof. Did a proper investigation take place? Brian Gerald says no, Joseph Thomas and Jim Charette say yes. The conflict, did proper investigation was done by Chief Thomas? The most important question is settled, is where is the paperwork? For small police items, there could be four pieces of paper for little, small incidences. With this kind of conflict or this kind of allegation, there's gonna be a packet submitted to HR or to the city administrator. If Joe Thomas did not do an investigation, I know that December ninth, Nick Lucia met with Jim Charette and the HR director, and he resubmitted thirty to forty allegations that can be supported and corroborated. That means that this is a new allegation situation. And by law, an outside police agency should be contacted by the city administrator or an acting police chief, as these re allegations are now resurfaced. That's what I am contending. I have nothing against Chief Gerald at all. I just want light processes to come forward. I want someone to stop pushing this issue back and find out the truth. In light of the above, I'd ask why has Brian Gerald not been, I did put not, not been removed as a viable candidate for the police chief? Because there is a clause here that has not been settled, and it is a lightning rod. And that's all I have been trying to push forward. An outside police agency, I call the state police and the feds. The state police cannot come in without the invitation of the city administrator. If I change my word into the feds, to embezzlement and conspiracy, they can come in without any invitation. I am not trying to cause any embarrassment to the city. I care about the integrity and the appearance of propriety of the city. I have been trying to just push this forward as a question. It is a legitimate question. And like I said, right there, number three. The police have the culture, everything is documented, they are ready. Mr. Lance said that the investigation was done on the twenty eighth. I ask the question at council to every single council member. If so, where is the paperwork? I am tying up city resources and employees by now. If you're not gonna tell me the truth, to really nitpick, but we can stop this off if we just have that report. And if not, let's start all over.
To the chair. Number one, there was an investigation, there is paperwork.
I haven't received it on the three, three times.
Was an investigation, there is paperwork.
Brian Gerald says no.
Number two. Number two. Dr. Joseph E. Thomas is an employee of the US Department of State, training police officers so our troops can come home.
We have governors going down, we have politicians going down, and a lot of connections. I've never been out of order.
Yes, you are, and this is not a dialogue. He has, he's responding to this, this is not a true way to conduct a challenge. You have the right to respond to your allegations. We have to, we have to respect that.
Dr. Thomas is an employee, employee of the US Department of State, senior police advisor, deputy director of police training, and he is currently in Baghdad, Iraq, and he is in a dangerous situation. But he's there, okay, because he's highly qualified. The state, the, the United States came and asked him to serve this duty, and when he tells me something, I take that as the truth. Alright? I have talked to him personally several times about this. And when he was home on leave recently, I spent two hours at his residence talking to him about this. He has investigated it. He has said there's no, there was no disparate treatment among the deputy chiefs. Deputy chiefs are not paid for overtime. And so there's flexibility in how their, their time and compensation is, is, their work time and scheduling is flexible. Now, number three. Alright. The police department has a payroll system. There was a list handed to me by a lieutenant. When I asked the lieutenant, "Did you get that list to the chief of police?", you know what his answer was? He didn't ask for it. That is a preposterous answer. That is a preposterous answer. I told, I talked to our outside attorney about that answer. That's the word he used, preposterous. How can a person ask for something that he doesn't know exists? So, again, I've asked Dr. Joseph Thomas to investigate it. He said, "Yes, I have. I investigated the comparable treatment of others in the deputy chief's position." And the settlement of the issue was as follows. One, thirty-two hours, which was, uh, deducted from the employee's vacation bank. And secondly, what he did, uh, what the chief said that he did to avoid any confusion in the future is that he said that he improved the procedure and that there has to be, uh, another review and signature on everyone's time for that report. And that is what he determined to be an appropriate response. And it is on the record, and there is a document where that amount was deducted. As far as, uh, the allegation, the employee did their own investigation. The employee reviewed records, okay, but the, the chief of police did the analysis, did the, the discussion with other people, and he made the decision.
So Brian Gerald told her why he didn't want to?
My council, if there's any other concerns, I'm concerned about the time.
I do have some concerns, uh, as a resident. I think if we allow residents to speak five minutes, we have to hold it all. It's not a responsibility, we could do any... If you don't hold the rule for one, you gotta weigh it for everybody else. And I think we have to be the better part, so that it's fair with everybody. But we have to stick to the rule and not weigh it for anybody. And I'm asking that it's a time set or something, you know?
Right, I...
If you wanna point the time.
No, 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 no. No, I, I have trouble with the clock, with my stopwatch, I have trouble with my cell phone. I'm getting a timer that counts backwards to five minutes. And that's an order for, for the meeting. So that we will have something that we can put, and it will count down, and there will be no question.
That's not even fair. The problem is when, the five minutes are up, and you say the five minutes are up, they won't stop talking. Now, we bring out a pollster and blow them away, or... They don't respect the... They don't respect the rules.
Alright, council, uh, there's been no business on the...
We've discussed this before, and I think it's prime time, uh, to start embracing technology. We, we, the way that we process our paperwork, so many other municipalities are now using technology. The resources that we know has less people in the clerk's office. If we can have, uh, a, a tactic, email tool. Those of us who want to use our computers, I understand that there are laptops that could be brought into the chambers that we already own, it would not require a new purchase. But some of us have our own laptops. I think it's time for us to start embracing technology and rent raising, we have less people to do things, and it's an opportunity for us. It's the same thing if it's on a computer screen as if it's in computers or papers. And I, for one, would be willing to start that process. Um, I've talked to some other council members who are very comfortable with technology. I know the city clerk is constantly asked for that. It comes, it's, it's time. It's time for us to embrace technology. And you can turn the pages, it could be at Kindle for everyone, and turn the pages. And those are only a hundred dollars a piece. And the city doesn't have to buy, I know I have iPad. Some of us, other of us have laptops. Uh, the city wants to have one in every council chamber like other municipalities. So when you sit down, you just pull up the agenda and you can move paper, uh, move it around and read it. Instead of us wasting all this paper, we talk about environment. Uh, we're killing trees, and we have less people to do all this paperwork.
Two questions. Um, do we have wireless in this, uh, facility? And here, and the second question, um, do we have the power to plug in? If we, uh, battery was low or on all of the, on the dials?
You wanna answer that, Ms. Frank?
Supposedly there is wireless in this room, and the program already does exist for... If anyone is willing to try and wants to bring in their laptop as their tablet, I would be more than happy to be if what we have is already created and the clerk's office will work if we wanna pilot it. We have the technology already online that you can plug in. We have been ready to do the wireless. Um, one of the problems is we need to plug something in. Um, like right now, I'm sitting in this bundle of cords. We don't have the proper techno, I mean, I don't think we have enough outlets in this room, and I can't speak through the chambers. I would be afraid someone's gonna trip and fall. I've almost fallen several times on this little corner, um... So, but some of the tablets, um, I have the laptop in here, and just depending how long our meetings are, they will go out of, you know, retard. So I'm willing to work, I know a few people have a charger interested, and please, I'm willing to move forward for those who wanna try it.
Bring a laptop on.
I, you know, I have a tablet, I have a laptop, I have iPad. But for me, I'm a visual learner. And for this, for my city council position, I just prefer all the papers. It's just, it's better for me to learn, so I think for each individual. I would, I don't know if I would want it to be on my computer. I'm hands on, so it, it varies for each person at times.
Well, that's why I said whoever is interested, I'd be willing to try it. And if someone wants to pilot it, um, I'd be more than happy to do that too, 'cause you're right, everyone...
You know what, I think the transition, and I, I hear what you're saying. I remember when I had the Franklin plan, and there was no one who was gonna transfer my schedule to, uh, a computer or a hand, I, I just, my staff forced me to try it, to keep my Franklin, but to put this next to me, and it, the transition happened. And sometimes, like you said, there are some handouts we'll still have to do, like the boys club and some other things. But I'm sure they could have emailed that to us. But, um, it is, it is a real transition, but I think if we all try, even if we have to have our paper for a minute, and then you'll find that you can look at the same thing on the screen, but it, it's a transition. And it's something that we need to move forward on. It's, it's two thousand and twelve, and we're still carrying around all these papers, papers, delivering them to houses. We're, we're, it's, it's time for us to move forward. And it, it'll be good for the team. But I understand there's a transition. But I think if you put them side by side, at least try. I think, uh, we can, we can make that progress.
I guess, you know, I don't mind that, but I just had a situation, for example, last week where, uh, a city minister, he gave me the, the appeals that one of the corporations made. And I had to see the treasure in, in the lobby. And I said, "I'd like to know exactly how much money is, is, is lost by the city." And then he sent me, he sent me a, uh, a letter from our attorney who handles our appeals. And, and it was, yeah, I couldn't get the attachment. So I never did, today I still don't have my answers using my computer at home. So, I mean, to me, something that's important, that I need the information on, I would like to have the proper information on. I don't want it a week later. And so I, but when I find the, the treasure somewhere and see the stash a pack, I'll, I'll ask them what, to answer to my question once, okay?
And, you know, there's gonna be some places where the guy, uh, when you ask for it, sometimes you have technology issues. But there will always be the clerk there with the paper, uh, for us if someone can't reference it. So we'll, I think we can work that out.
You know, I asked the entire city center, being closely, city center group, that entire city center being wireless.
I agree.
And, and, uh, and George was supposed to be coming up with something. And that's when they found out this room did not, you could, you could not have any wireless in this room. So I don't know what happened. I, I did probably notice that.
I think they turned the wireless on, and it was turned off. And I believe it turned on in both this room and the other room. You know what, it, again, if anyone has a laptop or a tablet or anything, I would love to work with you, maybe you can try. If you wanna stay with paper, that's fine too, but...
Well, Georgia, uh, has, has offered to help anybody that needs help, so...
We're, we're willing to help.
She sent us a letter not too long ago saying, you know, she'd like to help us out if you need questions. I thought she called me the other day, you know, about the exam for Cassie at Southfield, and I get my other email and I don't get the other one. So that sometimes it gets transferred. And I like to have my stuff at home, so now that she doesn't want me to get city information on my computer. It's dummy might come around and take my computer and get the information from itself. Confidentiality is also involved in this thing, so, I don't know. It's up to whoever figures it out.
And right now, you can go to the website, and if you go under the clerk section and you scroll down the left side of the page, you will see council agenda. If you click on the meeting, everything in this packet is right there. Everything is postmarked, you can join us over a year and a half. So it's already there, it's just a matter of you need the tool or the instrument for them. Now that tablets are becoming popular, I don't know if people like laptops or tablets, and there's different types. So it's already in place, it's already set up. Someone wants to bring in whatever they have, let's just see if it works. See if you like what we have, see if we need to, um, modify anything.
We had talked about this for a long time. It is just, somebody has to bring the program, and how we're gonna do it, and the cost of how much it's gonna cost, and, and see if everybody's on board. And we've never arrived at that consensus, so it's still on the table.
Well, yeah, example, the mayor offered to bring her tablet, there is no cost. That's right, it's already done.
I'm not gonna haul my laptop.
Okay, well, you don't wanna haul your, I know Jeremy has, but he would bring his, I don't know about...
This one is very extra.
The problem was, and I, I brought my laptop to the first meeting, oh, it's done.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so I, I brought my laptop to the first meeting, but the problem was is that the closest plug is behind the city attorney's, uh, chair. So the plugs aren't even reachable, so that's, that's a huge problem right there. Uh, but the program is up there, there is a friendly, and you could go right, if I had a laptop right now, I could pull up everything in this binder online. So it's worth investigating if you're interested, um, if you want to take for this.
Well, since we were looking into fixing the electrical issue.
Yeah, that, that was the main hiccup in that very first meeting where I brought my laptop, is that the plug wasn't even reachable from my chair.
Anywhere else on the way, I'm required to think.
Yeah, and I, um, actually, I agree with, with Jordan, that I'm more tactile. And I ran the, uh, the Ameritech Training Center, and we used, we put all the lessons on, on computers. And we found that there was a, a lot of pushback on some of it because of the amount of reading that you have to do. And with our package, this is a skinny package compared to what we normally get. And if I, if you send it to me on email, then all you've done is transferred the cost of me printing it myself instead of, of being done, and, uh, I'm doing a city's business. I'm not, I'm not supposed to be, uh, printing my own stuff. I mean, it's a city's responsibility to get me the material that I need for, for this meeting, so, um... I know that I do not like to read large volumes of stuff on a computer. Yep?
All right, I, I, I know this was presented to us at least a year ago, uh, as a trial, and a number of people, I think the majority said they'd be willing to try it. I said I would not. I've used a computer for many, many years. I've learned different programs, and it does not do one thing. And I will, I know that state legislatures, for example, do use laptops because of reviewing, and reviewing legislation that's proposed. We're not doing that. We're not just sitting there reading. We're moving back and forth, and we can make a case if you want, and you can do this. And I, I know all the churches can do it with computers. I agree with Ms. Jordan, and I agree with Mr. Frederick. I still read books, paper books. I don't want to read off the Kindle. I mean, if I went on vacation to the Bahamas, and I didn't have a, you know, the military's case of books, I'd take the Kindle. But for everyday reading, I like to have a paper book, and that's never going to change. I don't, this idea of saving a tree is ridiculous, because number one, we buy recycled papers. Number two, the paper comes from tree farms, which are, you're not saving a tree. All those trees are there to be used for paper. So they don't go down and cut trees out of old forest or anything like that. It's a tree farm that's meant there for paper, to, uh, provide paper. And we do recycle, and we buy recycled papers. So first of all, I mean, if people want to do it, if people want to do it, that's fine. I'm not willing to do that, I'm not, and a couple of other people, so, you know, if somebody wants to do that, fine. But I don't think it should be forced on, on the council, because we don't all like to use that right now.
I don't feel collected, so it's difficult for me to put into that. And I brought my laptop Kindle. I like to get back to my books that I have on my rack, the research, some of the first editions. I've never seen a first edition on Kindle, but some autograph, you know, four years ago.
I, I mean, technology's fine, but I think there's, you know, there's a limit to, uh, living that way, um...
You know, I, I just, I just have to say this. I'm looking at these thoughts, you could have a microwave in the kitchen, and you're drawing up a... I'm looking at these thoughts. I have iPhone, a phone that you can actually go on a computer. Time changes. I know there's resistance, but it is where we are with technology, and other municipalities do it. And I, I just really encourage you to sit through them side by side, and you'll find. But to just say, "No, I'm not going to try it," but just try it, because all of us have transition. When he was in training, I remember we took every secretary and everybody and told them that we would no longer send them letters or memos. You would have to go on your computer. And it sent the whole organization crazy. We had people taking a mouse, rubbing it against the, the screen of the computer. They were clueless. But we said we would, and they were handheld accounts. If you didn't go online and read your email, you would miss directives, and you could lose your job.
That's very different than what we do. It's just that it has a same...
Yeah, let me just say something. Yes, very transitional. Very, I mean, I just went to a seminar where Michigan State, PIP guys were there. They're saying that cars are likely to sell to the young people anymore because, because they can't text in, in the tux. And, and so, I mean, and they're wondering whether this whole, going into buses and things so they can use their whatever. And, and, and when my younger family's coming to my home, I have to check them at the door, because they sit there and play games, uh, and watch the football games, and I want them to heck out of there. Either watch the football game or get out of here. Don't tell me about what the Giants did ten minutes ago, or what the Gouin did, something else, or, or whatever. I mean, it, it's almost dividing families, it's saying. And so I have everybody check it at the door so they can carry on a useful conversation.
I had, it reminds me, I had a secretary, I took the typewriter away, gave her a computer, a Mac, and her husband came in and said, "What are you doing to my wife?"
I had, I had a young couple who sent their entire wedding invitation through email, too.
That's why I didn't call.
They did not mail, and the young people didn't see anything wrong with that.
I didn't get it.
We're, we're getting nowhere with this discussion. We're talking about wedding invitations.
I'm just talking about technology. You got it, Chris.
Well, you don't have to retell us this much, not all of it.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy holidays.